Good morning, and thank you for joining us today as the National Board of Public Health Examiners presents the fourth in our series of six webinars geared towards explaining the Certified and Public Health CPH credential and to help you prepare for the upcoming exam. Each session will be two and a half to three hours long and include a presentation, lecture, and interactive segments. A break will be offered midway through the presentation. This presentation will be archived on the MBPHE website, and you will also be emailed slides. And you can register for the remaining sessions on the MBPHE website. Today's session feature is Social and Behavioral Sciences. We are pleased to have Sarah Mona Prizvila, Assistant Professor at the University at Buffalo School of Public Health, Department of Community Health and Health Behavior, joining us today to speak on Social and Behavioral Sciences. Thank you, Sarah. Mona?
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for joining me on a Friday morning to be able to walk you through the Social and Behavioral Sciences component of the CPH exam. I'm really looking forward to our time this morning, and I hope that I can help adequately prepare you for your upcoming exam. So what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through, just to orient you about what we're going to be covering this morning during our webinar. When we think about the Social and Behavioral Sciences in public health, really, it's a key element is really bringing together multiple disciplines for health promotion and disease prevention. And you really want to think about this approach as using three major strategies. So you'll see this here listed on the slide. That first strategy really involves an enhanced understanding of both behavioral determinants of health, but also social determinants of health. And what's really important to note here is that this is very comprehensive. It moves from the individual level all the way up to the societal level. We look at both risk factors, but also protective factors, those that are both behavioral and social in nature. The second strategy that you want to be thinking about is that it really involves the development of intervention strategies that are derived from theories of change, but that importantly also have an evidence base. Now, that evidence base doesn't come from thin air. It actually comes from research that has systematically tested and, in fact, demonstrated that the intervention works above and beyond usual and customary practices. The third and final major strategy is that we really want to think about using systematic models in the way that we both plan and evaluate our programs. So you really want to be thinking about the Social and Behavioral Sciences in public health as really embracing a multidisciplinary approach, going from kind of theory and understanding to action, going again from theory to practice. And this really is a key feature of how we think about the Social and Behavioral Sciences in the practice of public health. So my talk today for our webinar is really going to be divided into two primary parts. The first part is listed here on the left-hand part of the slide. We're going to be covering patterns of disease, the social-ecological model, theories of change, and then kind of basic fundamentals of health promotion and disease prevention. We'll then take a break for about 10 minutes, and then Part Two is where we'll pick up. So in Part Two, we're going to be covering ethical issues and how we plan and evaluate public health programs. We'll then talk about various planning models that we'll use. We'll then jump into evaluation methods, and then we'll conclude by reviewing different scaling-up programs as well as sustainability. So that just kind of orients you to how the webinar is going to be structured for today. So Part One, we'll jump right into. We'll then pause and take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll pick back up after the break, going over Part Two here on the slide. So I thought it'd be helpful for us, when we're thinking about disease patterns, both domestically and globally, to look at what that actually looks like over time. And so this slide you see here presents the changing pattern of disease in the United States between 1900 and 2010. And so what we're looking at here are the leading causes of death in America during these two periods of time. So what you'll see here is that there's clearly a striking change in the diseases that are leading to mortality that really present to us as public health professionals. So for example, if we look at the top half of the slide, which shows us the leading causes of death for 1900, we'll see that pneumonia, tuberculosis, and gastrointestinal infections are the three top causes at the top. So really, back in 1900, infectious diseases were responsible for the kind of the primary drivers of mortality in America. Now, if you look at the bottom half of this slide, on the graph, you'll see there are now the leading causes of death for 2010. And what you'll see is that heart disease and cancer are actually the leading causes of death in America in 2010. So as a country, we've really shifted from infectious diseases to chronic diseases. And consequently, that really calls on different public health strategies, different public health responses, because the nature of these diseases confronting us in society have changed over time. So to look at this globally, I think there's often a common misperception out there that the mortality patterns that we see in the developed world are different from the developing world. But what you'll see in this slide is that this kind of challenges this misperception that's out there. So what you'll see on this slide are different causes of death shown by different colors. So on the bottom of the slide, the blue bar represents communicable diseases, maternal, perinatal, and nutritional conditions. The red bar represents premature deaths from non-communicable diseases for those below the age of 60. The green bar represents deaths, again, from non-communicable diseases but above the age of 60. And then that purple bar on the top represents injuries. So what you'll see here globally, if we add together both the green and the red bars, we get about 35 million deaths from chronic disease, which account for more than 60% of all deaths globally. So I think the important take-home message from this slide is that chronic disease is not just a problem or a pattern in the developed world. This is something that's happening globally, and that's important to be thinking about. This slide depicts the leading causes of death worldwide. And again, we see that the leading causes of death in the United States are not all that different from the global pattern. So again, you'll see cardiovascular disease and cancer on the right-hand side of the slide are really the two leading causes of death globally, just as they are in the United States. Now, this is important because the approaches that we take in the United States really are critical because they, in fact, have global relevance. The globe is dealing with chronic diseases, and many countries that were plagued by infectious diseases perhaps a few decades ago are now finding themselves in quite a different situation as they're now dealing with chronic diseases after they've successfully tackled infectious diseases in their nation. And so yet, they often don't have the infrastructure in place on how to effectively manage and kind of handle the chronic diseases that their population is seeing. And so again, the United States is not unique, and if anything, our experience with chronic disease really has meaningful relevance from a worldwide perspective. So again, I think it's important to recall that the impact of chronic diseases is not just an issue in the developed world, but it's also in the developing world. You also want to be remembering that the impact of chronic disease is not just an issue in high-income nations. Again, I think there's a common misperception that cardiovascular disease and cancer are really diseases of wealth and affluence and a certain type of diet. But if we look at this slide, that's actually telling us perhaps a different story and really challenging that notion. So what you see here are country categories defined by the World Bank income groups, classified into four different categories. And so you'll see the low-income categories are kind of that peachy color, which represent about 35%. The lower middle, just that yellowish color on the bottom, is about 37%. And then the upper middle and the high-income countries are the remaining two portions of the pie chart here. And so from this, you can see that the majority of worldwide chronic diseases are, in fact, occurring in the low and lower-middle-income countries. And this reality really guides us when we're thinking about public health action, because we need to think about a global perspective when we're considering and developing public health actions and strategies related to chronic disease. And so really, the majority of these worldwide chronic diseases are occurring in countries that we might not necessarily be thinking about, particularly low and lower-middle-income So I want to shift gears a bit for a moment and really consider how we tackle these leading causes of death as we're experiencing this shift from infectious disease to chronic diseases. And really, the first thing we need to do when we think about prevention and early intervention with chronic diseases is that we need to understand what the factors are that are really driving infectious, excuse me, chronic disease. And so we need to understand the behavioral risk factors of preventable death. The data on this slide here is from the United States, and what we're looking at are risk factors and the number of deaths per year attributed to those risk factors. So what you can see from this slide is that the leading indicators of the actual causes of death include tobacco, just kind of that reddish color on the right-hand side of the slide, as well as diet and physical activity, and then finally alcohol. So these three behavioral risk factors account for the lion's share, about 75% of the actual causes of death in America, particularly those that are early preventable deaths. I also think it's critical to mention that in addition to understanding behavioral risk factors that are associated with the leading causes of death, we also need to be considering the social influences at play in health promotion and disease prevention. And so of course, this webinar is titled, you know, "The Social and the Behavioral Sciences in Public Health," and so I don't want to gloss over the importance of really understanding social factors. So what I want to spend some time doing in the next couple of slides is to talk about health disparities and health inequity, and how these two ideas are really related to causes of death in the United States. So you probably have heard the term "health disparities," and that generally refers to a higher burden of illness, injury, disease, or mortality that's experienced by one population group relative to another group. And so this slide that you see here shows health disparities in heart disease, cancer, and in stroke. And what you'll see here is that there's a striking pattern where the mortality rates are higher among African-Americans relative to whites for all three of these disease categories. And so whites are represented in that orangish-red color bars, and then African-Americans are represented in that purply-gray kind of color. And so you see, as you look across the bars, that the rates of heart disease, cancer, and stroke are higher in African-Americans relative to their white counterparts. So this is evidence of a health disparity, again, having a higher burden of illness or mortality experienced by one population group relative to another group. So when we see poorer health outcomes consistently for certain sociodemographic groups, whether it's race, or gender, or age, or any of those other groups that you see listed here on the left-hand side of the slide, this pattern indicates that particular groups might be experiencing discrimination or exclusion from our public health approaches, whether it's an assessment in prevention or in our treatment approaches. Now, we also want to be thinking about what health inequalities or health inequities are. While I think it's helpful to think of a health disparity as evidence of a difference in a health outcome between two or more groups, it's important to know that health inequities is not synonymous with health disparities. So health inequities are avoidable inequalities in health between groups of people, whether it's within countries or between countries as well. And so these health inequities arise from inequalities both within and between societies. So health inequities is when we say that the health disparity that's evident is due to some form of systematic injustice. It's not just a pattern based on sociodemographic characteristics, but there's really a social driver of the pattern that we see that reflects a form of systematic injustice. And you might be wondering, what does that really mean? So common systematic injustices, particularly when we think about racial and ethnic disparities, are things like racial segregation, institutionalized racism, and unequal treatment. So as a consequence, a health inequity is representing not only that people have different health outcomes or different mortality rates, but they also have differential access to health and medical care. They often have lower rates of access to medical procedures or medical tests that are used to both diagnose and treat their disease. They also may have lower access to quality medical care. So to give you an example of what health inequities look like, let's kind of walk you through this slide that we have here from the CDC, from their National Program of Cancer Registries. What you'll see on the left-hand part of the slide is diagnosis differences between whites and blacks when it comes to follow-up time after receiving an abnormal mammogram. And so what you'll see is African-Americans, about 20% of them have a follow-up time longer than 60 days, which is kind of the clinical guideline for following up after receiving an abnormal mammogram, where for whites, it's only 12%. On the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see differences in initiation of treatment within 30 days. So for whites who receive an abnormal mammogram, 83% of them start treatment within 30 days, whereas for African-Americans, the rate is significantly lower at only 69%. So we really want to be using our understanding of both behavioral and social risk factors to approach health promotion and disease prevention, but we know that the existence of these health disparities and health inequalities requires some additional effort to really appropriately and effectively address the risk and protective factors across multiple domains. So what you'll see here on the slide, the image that you'll see on the right, is part of what was called the REACH Initiative in New Orleans, Louisiana. This is a project that was initiated by the CDC. REACH stands for Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health. So that's what the acronym REACH stands for. And this really was working to address inequities in cardiovascular disease for African-American women. This was a faith-based initiative in the New Orleans area that involved 40 African-American churches. So what they did in the REACH campaign is they took a lot of messaging about how to change diet and physical activity, and they put these messages on a fan that women could then use in churches. So in many of these African-American churches, there was no air conditioning. For those of you who live in the South, or maybe some of you who live in New Orleans, you know that it's an incredibly hot, humid place. And so they designed these fans as a culturally competent way to provide messaging about diet and physical activity in a way to help address the health inequality that is evident. So on the left-hand side, you'll see a list of common strategies for reducing health disparities. So things like increasing access to services, again, as the fan here demonstrates, providing culturally and linguistically competent programs. Third, improving patient provider communication, which always is key, developing programs to eliminate provider discrimination. And then fifth, you'll see here, increased minority representation among the healthcare workforce. We know when we have a disparity in who provides services, we often have a disparity in who receives services. So even just in The New York Times, there was an article published just back in May that showed only about 5% of practicing medical doctors in America are black, despite the fact that African-Americans represent about 12 or 13% of the American population. So we know when we have this disparity in who provides healthcare services, we often consequently have a disparity in who receives services. I wanted to end this first section of our webinar about patterns of disease by sharing with you a really an excellent resource from the World Health Organization. The link is provided here on the bottom of the slide. It can be downloaded free of charge. This World Health Organization report comprehensively covers social determinants of health and different ways that we collectively can approach health inequalities by addressing those major social determinants of health that exist in society. And so I encourage you to kind of take a look at this report at your own time. Again, it's downloadable, provided with the link that's listed on the bottom of the slide. So what I'm going to do now is launch two different poll questions, just to kind of summarize what we've covered so far in this first section of the webinar. And I'll read through the question that I have here, and then if you can take a moment to do a self-assessment to figure out how well folks are doing with the content I've just covered. There's actually two poll questions that I have in a row, so I'm going to read this first question. I'll give you about a minute to answer it, and then we'll talk about it. So the first question is, which of the following statements is false? Choice A: Mortality rates from chronic disease have increased in the last 100 years. Choice B: In 1900, the leading causes of death were infectious disease. Choice C: In 2010, the leading causes of death were infectious disease. Or choice D: Mortality from infectious diseases has declined between 19, that should say, excuse me, 1900 and 2010. Okay, great. Thank you to all of you who responded to our first poll question. 79% of you got the correct answer, which is choice C. In 2010, the leading causes of death were infectious disease. That is in fact false. We know that we're experiencing this shift in patterns of disease, and in 2010, really, the leading causes of death were chronic diseases, including cardiovascular disease, cancers, and stroke. So we'll now move to poll question two. Oh, one moment, sorry about that. So here's question two. Which of the following is not an example of a health disparity? Choice A: African-Americans have the highest mortality rate of any racial or ethnic group for all cancers combined. Choice B: People with lower socioeconomic status have disproportionately higher cancer death rates than those with higher socioeconomic status. Choice C: Hispanic women are as likely to have stomach cancer as non-Hispanic white women. Choice D: Kidney cancer incidence and mortality rates are twice as high in men as in women. Okay, great. So thanks to all of you again who responded to poll question number two. There is only one correct answer, and that answer is C: Hispanic women are as likely to have stomach cancer as non-Hispanic white women. This question may have tripped some of you up a bit, and so I want to make clear that the reason why the answer is C is that you're not seeing a difference between groups. Remember, when we think about what a health disparity is, it's evidence of some type of difference between two or more groups. And so choices A, B, and D are demonstrating that the rate of cancer incidence or cancer mortality is higher in certain groups and lower in others, whereas in choice C, that's an evidence of a question where you're not seeing a difference between Hispanic women and non-Hispanic white women. So the correct answer for this is choice C. Again, thanks to all of you who responded to that question. We're now going to move on to the second component of Part One of the webinar, where we're going to be talking about the social-ecological model. And then we're going to move on to talk about theories of change to really help us understand those mechanisms by which determinants may influence patterns of disease as well as health. And so many of you might be familiar with the social-ecological model, and I'm going to spend a good amount of time just making sure you understand what this model's all about, what some of the assumptions are, as well as the key principles. So this slide really shows the nesting of levels of the social-ecological model. So that purple, smallish box in the middle of the slide demonstrates individual level, and then you kind of move out within the nest to the interpersonal level, then the organizational level, fourth, the community level, and then fifth, and finally, kind of that largest group is what we call the policy-level influences. So let's start by just talking about some of the central assumptions of the social-ecological model. The first that's very important is really that the model itself has a multi-dimensional focus on both physical and social environment. So you can think about this as including geography, architecture, culture, behavioral settings, and also it has a focus on personal attributes. So when we think about someone's genetic history, their psychological characteristics, also individual behaviors, and how this kind of physical and social environment and personal attributes kind of mesh together, and we talk about that in terms of the person-environment fit. So how do an individual's behaviors mesh with, again, their physical and social environment? The degree of fit between a person's biology, behavior, and socio-cultural needs and environmental resources available to them is also kind of a key assumption of the social-ecological model. So the key principles of the model itself are listed here on the left-hand side of your slide, and I'm going to walk you through these four principles using an example from HIV testing. So many of you may know that there are about 55,000 new HIV infections annually in the United States, and this rate has been relatively stable over the last decade or so. However, we know about roughly 15% to 18% of HIV-positive people are unaware of their status. They do not know that they, in fact, are infected with HIV. And so as a consequence, we as a country, and particularly at CDC, we've prioritized increasing the number of people who know their HIV status as really a priority, where we need to get people to be aware of their status. And so as a consequence, how do you know your HIV status? You get tested. So let's walk through these, again, these four SEM models when we're thinking about HIV testing. The first principle is that multiple factors have an influence on one's health behavior. So in the example of HIV testing, we can think about this as an individual's knowledge about HIV risk, what their attitudes are about getting tested, as well as what their risk behaviors are. They may not consider themselves at risk of contracting HIV, so getting tested might not necessarily be on their radar. The second principle talks about the fact that these factors interact at multiple levels. So even if we work to have somebody increase their knowledge about HIV risk, but if they're not aware of different testing options that might be available to them, we need to be thinking about different types of change, perhaps at different levels of the social-ecological model. So maybe a way to change people's behaviors when it comes to HIV testing is not only to improve their knowledge and their behavioral risk assessment, but provide different testing options. So maybe we need to provide mobile testing, where people go out into communities and actually do testing in a bus or in a van. Maybe even changing community norms about testing. If there's stigma associated with getting screened for HIV in a particular community, that can be a deterrent for people to engage in testing behaviors. The third principle of the social-ecological model is the fact that multi-level interventions should be the most effective at behavior change. Now, remember, that means that just because we build it, doesn't mean they're going to come get tested. Just because we create this, you know, this mobile testing van that goes out into communities at higher rates of HIV doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to get tested. And so again, providing interventions at multiple levels tend to be most effective. So it's not just a one-shot deal. Fourth and finally, the last principle is that models really need to be behavior-specific. They tend to be most powerful when that's the case. And so you really want to identify the most relevant potential influences of a particular health behavior at each level of the social-ecological model. So let's talk about a case example using tobacco. Part of the reason why I chose tobacco for this case example is, given what we've covered earlier today, we know that tobacco is one of the leading causes of preventable death in America, and it seems sensible then to utilize this as a topic when we're reviewing the social-ecological model. So let me first provide you with a little bit of background. Just last month, December 2015, CDC released a report about what current smoking rates looked like in America. And nearly 17 of every 100 adults aged 18 or older currently smoke cigarettes. So that's about 17%. This means that, that translates to about 40 million adults. We know that cigarette smoking is the leading cause of preventable disease and death. It accounts for more than 480,000 deaths annually in America, or about one in every five deaths. The good news is that current smoking The good news is that current smoking rates have declined pretty substantially in America. So if we look back to 1965, about 42% of American adults reported current cigarette smoking. And so we've got that down to about 70% right now in 2014, which is good news. But despite this decrease that we've seen, we know that health disparities exist. So cigarette smoking rates are highest among American Indians and Alaska natives at about 29%. They are lowest among Asians at about only 9%. We know that cigarette smoking rates are highest among those who received a GED at about 43%, and lowest among those with a graduate-level degree at about 5%. Finally, we know that cigarette smoking rates are higher among people living below the poverty level at about 26%, compared to only about 15% of adults who live at or above the poverty level. So as a consequence, this demonstrates to us that the existing tobacco prevention and control strategies that we're using don't seem to be penetrating particular groups that are at greater risk, particularly those that are lower-income groups and also racial and ethnic minorities. So as a consequence, we really need to have a broader understanding of tobacco use that can help guide us in how we develop subsequent public health interventions. So this slide demonstrates how we actually use the social-ecological model as a framework for addressing tobacco use among young, low-income men. I'm not going to walk you through all of this because there is quite a lot of information on this slide. But this is a nice general resource guide for you when you're thinking about multiple levels of influence and different behavioral and social determinants that operate at each of these five social-ecological model levels. So the levels of influence are listed there on the left-hand part of the slide, moving from the individual to the interpersonal, then organization, community, and society. And then the right-hand side of the slide demonstrates those key behavioral and social determinants at each of the levels. One of the key take-home messages, though, from this slide is really to remember that using the social-ecological model really helps to acknowledge that there are multiple factors that influence a person's health behavior, that the influences interact across various levels of the model itself. Third, that multi-level interventions tend to be the most effective. And then finally, you tend to get, again, the most bang for your buck when your interventions themselves are behavior-specific. All right, so we're going to end that section on the social-ecological model and transition over to talking about different theories of change. So clearly, there are more theories of change than you see listed here on the slide. But in the time that we have together in our webinar this morning, I don't have the time to cover them all. And so I've chosen selected theories at various levels of the social-ecological model. I've picked these because they are most often part of the public health curricula at most schools of public health. And so let me walk you through the ones that I've selected to discuss in today's webinar. The first are three at the individual level. So we're going to be talking about the health belief model, theory of planned behavior, as well as the trans-theoretical model. I'll then talk about four different theories at the interpersonal level, including social cognitive theory, social support, social networks, stress and coping, and then social influence. And then we'll end by talking about four different theories at the organization and community level, including organizational change theory, community organization theory, communication theory. And then we'll end things with talking about the diffusion of innovation theory. So before I jump into talking about the theories of change at the individual level, let's just back up a moment and make sure we have a good review of what a theory is and why we use them. So as a review, a theory is really a set of interrelated concepts, definitions, and propositions that present a systematic view of events or situations. Theories also specify relationships among these variables to help us really either explain or predict the events or situations that we're confronted with. And so theories help us to plan, implement, and then subsequently to evaluate interventions. I often think about theories as a way to help us answer the questions of why, what, and how. So when you think about the why, theories help us understand, well, why are people not following advice to engage in a particular healthy behavior? Or on the flip side, why are people engaging in unhealthy behaviors, even though there's advice telling them that that's not the recommended behavioral choice? For the what, theories help us understand, you know, what do we need to know before we develop an intervention? What should be monitored? What should we even measure when we're thinking about our evaluation of our program? And then for the how, theories really help us understand how should programs and strategies be shaped to really effectively reach the people or the organizations or the communities that we're trying to impact when it comes to behavior? So let's think about how we actually use theories then. And I kind of think about it as a four-step process. When we're using theories, we first start with the problem or the behavior. Second, we then identify the known determinants, whether they are behavioral or social in nature or both. We also even try to think about suspected determinants, those that we might have a suspicion that this might be leading to a particular behavioral choice. The third step was we kind of, what we talk about in theory courses, that we map these determinants to particular theoretical constructs that are out there. So making the connections between a determinant and a particular construct. And then fourth, we use our theories to make decisions regarding how we develop and implement a particular intervention. So in that frame, we then think about, well, how are we going to deliver it? Who's going to do the delivering? Where and when do we deliver the intervention? And also, what are some of the key content components of the theory itself? Okay, so let's talk about the first of the three theories of change. Remember, these theories of change that I'm going to be talking about, health belief model, theory of planned behavior, and trans-theoretical model, all are used to understand and change an individual's health behaviors. And the focus really is on attitudes and beliefs and also readiness to change. So the first theory we're going to walk through is the health belief model. The focus of the health belief model is really is that individuals' beliefs are the fundamental determinants of behavior. And the basic premise behind this model is that health behavior is determined by how people perceive a threat of a particular health problem, how they appraise the behavior that's being recommended to try to offset the likelihood that that problem will occur, and then cues to action. So again, the health belief model really addresses an individual's perceptions of the threat that's posed to them by the problem, the benefits of avoiding that threat, and then the factors that influence their decision to make an action. Health belief model is what we call a value expectancy theory. So the idea behind that is that there's an expectancy. A person believes that increased effort is going to lead to some type of improved performance. And there's also an outcome component to this, that the person values that reward or outcome that they will be experiencing as a result of the effort that they put forth. And so based on these, this assumption, this value expectancy component of health belief model, we have this assumption that people should desire to avoid illness. People should want to get well. There's also an assumption that people believe that a particular health action that's available to him or her is going to work at preventing an illness. So what you'll see on the top of the slide here is the different constructs within this particular model. We start with perceived susceptibility. This is answering the question, how likely do you think you are to have this particular health issue? Next is perceived severity of the disease. How serious of a problem do you think this disease is if you were to have it? We then move to perceived benefits and barriers. So with perceived benefits, how well does this recommended behavior change reduce the risks that are associated with getting this particular health issue? And then the barriers, what are those potential negative aspects of doing the recommended behavioral change? On the right-hand side of this image, you'll see that there are cues to action. These are the factors that cause a person to change or to want to change. And then another piece that's important is perceived self-efficacy. So self-efficacy is the belief that you can successfully do a behavior that's required to produce a particular outcome. I think it's important when we're thinking about self-efficacy, this is really a key piece of health belief model, but other theories as well. As the health concerns of our country have really shifted to lifestyle-related conditions, so some of the things that we talked about earlier when it comes to tobacco, diet, physical activity, drug use, alcohol consumption, I think self-efficacy has really begun to taken on greater importance, both as an independent construct in and of itself, but also as a key component of the health beliefs model. What I think is nice and useful to remember about the health belief model is that it's been applied to a wide variety of behaviors, including preventive health behaviors that are either health-promoting or trying to reduce risks. So there's been lots of studies using health belief model with promoting health behaviors like diet and physical activity, also health risk behaviors like decreasing smoking, increasing vaccination rates, even contraceptive practices have been applied using this particular model. Sick role behaviors have also utilized the health belief model, so how people comply with recommended medical regimens, oftentimes following a diagnosis of a particular illness. And then also, you see a lot of applications of the health belief model in clinic uses. So how people engage in regular care with their physicians for a wide variety of health outcomes and illnesses. We'll now talk about the second theory at the individual level, and that's the theory of reasoned action. The focus for this particular theory is an individual's attitudes as fundamental determinants of behavior. And so this particular theory was designed in the mid-1960s. The idea was that it really wanted to explain intention for behavior, that people in fact have a high degree of control performing. And so the theory of reasoned action includes measures of attitude, social normative perceptions, and how those influence behavioral intention, which in turn should affect the behavioral outcome at the end. Some of the key assumptions of this particular theory include the idea that behavior results from intentions. So again, attitudes and intentions being a key determinant of behavior. And the idea that an individual's motivational factors determine the likelihood of them actually performing that particular behavior. In addition, one of the other assumptions is that people are seen as rational actors, so they should engage in behaviors that kind of make sense and that we shouldn't do things that are irrational. The nice thing about this theory is that it also focuses on cognitive factors, like your beliefs and your values. And they use those cognitive factors as better understanding how people are motivated, what their behavioral intentions are. The major constructs are listed on the bottom of the slide. So behavioral intention is the perceived likelihood of performing the given behavior. The attitude toward that behavior is kind of how a person evaluates the particular behavior. Subjective norm is this idea that the belief about whether most people either approve or disapprove of a particular behavior and how that can influence someone's decisions. Behavioral beliefs are belief that a behavioral performance is associated with certain attributes or certain outcomes. And then normative beliefs, beliefs about whether people around you, again, approve or disapprove of that behavior. Finally, motivation to comply is important as well. How motivated are you to do what these important people think? You might believe that people around you, like your spouse or your doctor, approve of a certain behavior. But if you're not motivated to do what your doctor or your spouse thinks you should do, that might not make a difference in terms of your behavioral outcome. Now, the theory of reasoned action was modified in the 1970s, and the name changed to theory of planned behavior by adding three new constructs. So you'll see in the image here on the slide, there are three boxes that are in a grayish-blueish color. Those include control belief. So this is the perceived likelihood of each facilitating or constraining condition actually happening. Perceived power, this is the idea that the perceived effect of each condition in making the performance easy or difficult. So how likely will each condition make the behavior itself difficult or easy for an individual to perform? And then finally, perceived behavioral control. How much control do I think I have over a given behavior? And then all of those work together to influence behavioral intention and then ultimately, the outcome of behavior. So for an example, when we're thinking about theory of reasoned action or theory of planned behavior, let's again, use a tobacco example here. So someone might be thinking, well, if I try to quit smoking, I'm going to have withdrawal. And that's going to be really difficult to deal with. So why should I try to quit smoking in the first place? So really, this theory is all about thinking about individuals' attitudes as well as intentions when we're thinking about determinants of behavior. Let's now move to the third and final theory at the individual level, and that's what we call the trans-theoretical model. So the focus of this is that an individual's readiness to change is the key determinant of behavior. While health belief model and a theory of reasoned action are considered continuum theories, the trans-theoretical model is a stage theory with a system to define specific stages. There's a explicit ordering of the stages. And then there are common barriers within stages that might be different from those barriers between stages. So this theory stands out from the other two that we've covered in that it acknowledges that behavior change is a cyclical process. The basic premise behind this model is that behavior change, again, is a process, that individuals differ in their readiness to change. And so as a consequence, we need to be developing strategies that are tailored based on where somebody is in their readiness to change. The key stages are listed here. So the first of which is what we call pre-contemplation, which is on the top of the box. Pre-contemplation, folks do not intend to change the behavior in the next six months. So if we ask somebody, are you interested in trying to engage in physical activity? And they say no, they would be in the pre-contemplation stage. The next stage is what we call contemplation. So somebody might be thinking about changing in the next six months. So if we ask somebody, are you thinking about being physically active soon? And they say yes, they're considered to be in the contemplation stage. Third is what we call preparation. People are committed to change within the next month or so. So the question would be, are you ready to plan how you will begin being physically active? If someone responds yes, they'd be in that preparation stage. Next is action. So people have actually made the change in the last six months. So are you in the process of beginning and maintaining a physical activity plan? And then finally, we have the maintenance stage. Are you trying to remain physically active? And have you made that change for at least six months? So research shows that generally, populations are the lower levels of stage, usually in the pre-contemplation and contemplation stages. But again, as I mentioned earlier, this, we really need to match interventions based on where somebody is in terms of their stages. Those tend to be most effective. What's important about the trans-theoretical model is it does have this temporal dimension and really provides a nice framework for understanding and segmenting the entire process of intentional behavior change. It's not just, you know, giving one intervention to everybody. It acknowledges that people are at different readiness levels to change. And really, the theory views motivation as a state of readiness to move through and progress, progress through those different stages. It proposes a predictable pathway too for behavioral change. So it makes sense that someone would move from pre-contemplation to contemplation and then eventually to action stage and maintenance, rather than somebody being at the active stage and then the next stage moving back all the way to pre-contemplation, for example. Okay, so we're done going over the theories at the individual level. We're now going to shift to talk about theories of change focusing on relationships. So this is mostly at the interpersonal level. The focus is really on factors in someone's social relationships that can influence their health. We're going to be talking about learning processes, relationships between individuals, as well as coping strategies. So the first theory that we're going to talk about at the interpersonal level is what's called social cognitive theory. The primary focus behind this theory is that learning processes are a key determinant of health. Like the other theories that we've covered, social cognitive theory has some key assumptions. The first is that the environment, both physical and social, plays a significant role in determining behavior. Another key piece in terms of assumptions is that people are not considered to be passive learners. We learn by observing others. We can also self-regulate our behavior, and we can anticipate outcomes of a given behavior. The final assumption of this particular theory is that people's confidence about engaging in a behavior change can improve over time. One of the key elements of the social cognitive theory is the concept called reciprocal determinism. So this, think about this as kind of the dynamic interaction between the person, the behavior, and their social and physical environment. So when you think about the person as this kind of three pieces of reciprocal determinism, the person is really an individual's thoughts, feelings, their knowledge, their beliefs, their values, their personality, even their attitudes. The behavior is what the person is trying to do. So oftentimes, what they say or do. And then the environment, again, includes both their physical and their social environment. So in the idea of reciprocal determinism, if you change one of those three components, it should lead to a change in the other two components. And so when we're using social cognitive theory, interventions should really consider multiple avenues to behavior change that include the environment, someone's skill, and also just personal characteristics. I can't emphasize this enough, particularly since we're talking about the social behavioral sciences and public health. The environment is really a key piece. And when we need to make sure that we're understanding how we define the environment. So think of the environment as factors that are external to the person. so think of the environment as factors that are external to the person that have both a social and a physical element to them. So your social environment can include your family, your friends, coworkers, your community, your larger neighborhood. Think of the physical environment though, as kind of the classic sense of how we think about environment perhaps. So facilities, the availability of certain factors, temperature, the natural environment, the built environment. We really want to be using the environment when we're thinking about social cognitive theory as providing an opportunity for social interaction and for how we think about how we change the physical environment. It involves families, it involves teachers, friends in our intervention, and really trying to modify our environment to support positive behavior change and then also inhibiting negative behavior. Okay, so the second theory at the interpersonal level is what we call social support or social networks. The focus on this is really the relationship between individuals and how the nature of these relationships can have an influence on someone's beliefs and behaviors. One of the key functions of social relationships, as all of us have experienced since we're social beings, is that social relationships provide social support. Think about social support as aid or assistance that's exchanged through someone's social relationships and their interpersonal transactions. So there's kind of four different pieces or types of social support that we talk about when we're, when we're reusing this particular theory. The first of which is what we call emotional support. So this is really all about empathy, love, caring, and trust that's built within relationships. The second type of support is what we, what we call instrumental support. So think about this as more tangible in nature. So the tangible aid and services that can directly assist the person in need. So let's say, for example, you have a neighbor who doesn't drive and they need to get to a doctor's appointment. And so you can provide instrumental support to your neighbor by driving them to their doctor's office for their, for their medical appointment. The third type of social support is what we call informational support. So this is providing advice or suggestions or different types of information that a person can use to address a health problem. So let's say you find out that your, your loved one, whether it's a family member or a friend, was diagnosed with diabetes. Being able to provide a pamphlet of information as they work to kind of address their new diagnosis or offering them suggestions about healthcare providers in your area that they might want to consider making an appointment for. Providing advice about different therapies or different options that are available as they work through their diagnosis. The fourth and final type of social support we talk about is appraisal support. So think about this as constructive feedback. This is the feedback and the appraisal information that people use for self-evaluation. So again, it's that constructive feedback, that affirmation that we give to others. The next theory that we'll talk about at the interpersonal level is what we call so, a stress and coping theory. The focus for this is, as we would imagine, coping strategies as fundamental determinants of health. And the idea behind this is that there are stressful experiences for all of us that we, that we go through on a daily basis and how those experiences are constructed as person-environment transactions. So how we can think about the impact of an external stressor as being mediated by how a person appraises the stressor and what resources they have at his or her disposal to deal with them. The theory was really developed to examine how people appraise and cope with a wide variety of stressful encounters. This can range from minor daily hassles like commuting to work or dealing with, you know, a a family member that frustrates you in the morning, for example, but also major life events that can be stressful. These stressors are defined as kind of demands made by both the internal and the external environment that upset your equilibrium, makes upset your balance. And as a consequence, they affect one's physical and psychological well-being. And you require some level of action to try to be able to restore that balance, to restore that equilibrium. How one copes with their stressors represents how a person adapts to the stressor itself. I think when we're thinking about this for public health issues, there's a lot of really exciting and challenging opportunities and needs to apply the theory of stress and coping to both emerging and contemporary public health issues. So things like terrorism or natural disasters like hurricanes, other mass traumatic events. I think there's again a nice opportunity for us to be thinking about the use of stress and coping theory as a way for us to understand some of the contemporary issues that we're being faced with and how we work with others around us in our social environments to be able to, to address some of these stressors that we're confronted with. The next theory that I'm going to cover is the social influence theory. So this theory is the idea that social influence is a process directed at a behavior change through communication. And that can be both as part of a formal or an informal relationship between people. So an example of a formal relationship would be a patient provider relationship. Something more informal would be something of a family level. So spouse to spouse, partner to partner, parent to child, for example. This particular theory can be used for creating a new behavior, reinforcing an existing behavior, as well as changing a behavior. When we think about social influence, we need to really be thinking about kind of the who, what, when, where issue. So who is the source? Who is the communicator? That's providing the information. We also need to be thinking about what the message is itself. What is the communication that's being shared in this interpersonal relationship? The target audience, of course, who the, who the receiver of the information is. And what the channel is, what are they using to relay the message? Is it face-to-face communication? It is something that, that we're using something on electronic basis? Is it something that's done, you know, kind of more remotely? And how the situation in which the message is presented. So behavior change may occur from interactions with others who tend to be similar to you rather than dissimilar. Also those who, whose opinion you value or respect. And also behavior change might occur from those who are considered an expert. So the more similar you are to the other person, if you respect their valued opinions, there is a greater probability of a behavior change. So let's think of the example of the, of the formal relationship between a patient and a provider. The communication between your doctor and you can be quite important for behavior change, particularly when the patient would respect and value their healthcare provider's opinions as well as their suggestions for behavior change. So for example, if your healthcare provider says, you know, you should avoid drinking alcohol because it interacts with your medications and that can decrease the effectiveness of your medications. The idea behind social influence theory is that the physician themselves can have a meaningful impact on a patient's alcohol consumption because the patient itself, him or herself respects and values the opinions and suggestions provided by their healthcare provider. So this is again, this idea of the social influence being directed through behavior change through communication as part of that, that relationship between individuals. Okay, so that concludes our theories at the interpersonal level. Let's now talk about theories of change focusing on organizations and communities. So we use these particular theories of change to understand and change the role that both organizations and communities play in health promoting and health inhibiting behaviors. We're going to be talking about organizational policies and practices, how communities are organized, but also community building, how information is produced and exchanged, and then how we disseminate innovations that have been developed. So the first theory that we're going to be talking about at this particular level is what we call organizational change theory. Now, we know that many behavior change programs occur in organizational settings. So places like schools, work sites, clinics, are examples of organizational settings where a lot of behavior change programs occur and exist in society. We know that organizations' environments also have a direct and indirect impact on our health. So think about it in this way. So the way that we have access to affordable, healthy foods, locations of grocery stores, things like that, farmers markets, that's an organizational reality. Smoke-free work sites. Decades ago, that was not a reality, but in many places, that's a very common element in most states across the country. So that's an organizational environment that has an influence on our health. A third example would be something like protection from occupational exposures. Again, some feature about our organizational environment that protects us from exposure to occupational hazards. So given the importance of organizations in our everyday life and well-being, organizational policies and practices are frequently the target of behavior change interventions. So for this particular theory, organizational change theory, the focus is on, again, policies and practices as fundamental determinants of health. And there are two basic premises that vary based on the type of approach that we're talking about. So the first of which is a stage approach, the second is a developmental approach. Let's take a moment to walk through the stage approach first. So with the stage approach, organizations must pass through specific steps as they change. And there are strategies to promote change that have to really be matched to various points in the change process. So in a way, kind of think about this as the way we talked earlier about trans-theoretical model kind of being a stage theory rather than a continuum theory. So in the stage theory, it really helps to explain how organizations develop new goals, new programs, or new ideas. So here are the four stages in this particular approach. The first is what we call the awareness stage. This is where you're defining the problem and then evaluating potential solutions to the problem. The second is the adoption stage. So this is where you're developing a policy and formulating it and you're starting to allocate resources to start the change. The third is the implementation component. So this is when the innovation is actually being implemented and we're starting to see what reactions occur, potentially, hopefully positive, but potentially negative as well, and really kind of monitoring those. And then fourth and finally, you've got the institutionalization stage. This is when the policy becomes so entrenched in the organization that it's, it's kind of a, just a common element now. Your new goals have been realized and you've really kind of fully maintained the change and it's become institutionalized. And the second approach, which we call the developmental approach of organizational change, this approach is a bit different in that it tries to improve the quality of work life by looking at a couple of different components. The first is organizational climate. So how we think about an organization's personality or move from a, in a collective sense. The second is the organizational culture. So these are some of the assumptions or beliefs that are shared pretty strongly by organizational members. They, these cultural beliefs and assumptions often operate unconsciously. They're just kind of there as, as key components that were, that you're not really thinking about consciously. And then third is the organizational capacity. So how can we have the optimum level of functioning, not just of the larger organization, but also of the subsystems that comprise the larger organization? So really, in this development approach, there's a process of continuous diagnosis, action planning, implementation and evaluation. And it has this overall goal of transferring knowledge and skills to organizations to, to reach the bottom line, to really improve capacity for problem solving. Our next theory is what we call community organization theory. And with this particular theory, the focus is on community organization and community building as fundamental determinants of health. So the idea behind this is that community groups themselves have to identify their problems rather than then outsiders coming into the community and saying, you know, here are the list of problems that we've identified. The idea behind community organization theory is that the community members themselves work together to, to identify what their key health problems are. They, as a group, then also mobilize their resources, both financial and otherwise, and then use those resources to design and implement interventions to reach the overall community goal. The next theory at this level is what we call the communication theory. So the focus here is really on how information is produced and exchanged. And those are the key influences of determining health for a, for a larger community. So the basic idea behind this is how we can use media, both mass media or social media, and different communication strategies to provide information, to provide advice, to provide suggestions as a way to influence not only behavior change, but to influence what people are concerned about. So you can think about communication strategy again as how we produce and exchange the information. I think as a timely example, the Zika virus is actually a neat way to think about this when we're thinking about communication theory. So many of you might be familiar with this in the media about a particular virus that is quite common in parts of the Americas. There's concern even just in the last few days that it might be spreading all the way throughout into, into North America and including the United States. And so how we communicate risk about this particular virus, about who's at, who's at risk, what the exposures are, and then how we effectively can use media and communications to influence behavior change and really influence what people are concerned about. The last theory that we'll talk about at the community and organization theory level is what we call diffusion of innovation theory. So this particular theory is focused on the widespread dissemination of interventions that are proven to be successful. And that's really the fundamental determinant of health. So diffusion is really a process. It involves a special type of communication with messages about new ideas. Those messages are then distributed or disseminated through certain channels over time among members of a particular social system. I like to think about diffusion as a kind of social change. So think about it as the process by which alterations occur in a social system, both in structure as well as function. So we now, I'm using these terms, I want to make sure you're, you now know what, of an idea of what diffusion is. But what do we mean when we say dissemination? So this focus says widespread dissemination of successful interventions. So I like to think about dissemination as the planned kind of systematic efforts that are designed to maximize reach and adoption of a new innovation. So really to make the innovation more widely available. So how does dissemination relate to diffusion? So diffusion, think about diffusion as the outcome of the dissemination. So again, the dissemination is that planned systematic effort to reach the, and adopt the innovation by others. And the diffusion is the outcome of that, of that dissemination itself. So now that you know what dissemination is, you know what diffusion is, you might be thinking, well, what does that mean about what's an innovation? So you might be wondering, what exactly is she talking about when she says innovation? I like to think about an innovation as an idea, a practice, or an object that's perceived as new by whoever's adopting it. So whether the unit of adopter is a community or a work site or a university, the idea, practice, or object is being perceived as new by the unit of adopter. And so think about that when you think about innovation. I also like to think and distinguish between different types of innovations. Some innovations can be hard. When we talk about innovations that are hard, we think about technological innovation. So things like iPads or tablets, Velcro, those are hard kind of technological innovations. And the same, at the same time, innovations can also be considered soft. So these are things that are more ideas. So representative government, cooperative learning techniques, those are examples of innovations that are soft. Now, we know while diffusion of public health innovations is quite a complex process, we really need to be thinking about the relative advantage of the innovation. So the idea with relative advantage is that the effectiveness of the innovation itself compared to the alternatives is really critical to its diffusion. If the adopters don't think that it's better than what's already out there, it's not likely to diffuse well. And so you really needed to be thinking about this in relative terms. Is the innovation that we're trying to diffuse, is it more effective or considered more effective compared to the alternatives that are out there? So the more effective the intervention, the more likely it should diffuse. Finally, let's just briefly walk through the five different stages for diffusion of innovation. The first is awareness. You need to be exposed to the innovation, but you might lack complete information about it. So you're just kind of in that general awareness stage. The second stage you move to is interest. So this is when you become interested in the new idea or the new practice and the new object, and you're beginning to seek additional information to learn more about it. The third stage is what we call evaluation. So this is where you're mentally applying the innovation to the present and your anticipated future situation. And then you make some type of decision about whether or not to try it. So that's at evaluation stage. The fourth stage is what we call trial. So this is where actually you're doing it. You're making full use of the innovation, this new idea, practice, or object. And then finally, you have the adoption stage. This is when the organization or the community decides to fully use the innovation and continue it for an extended period of time. Okay. So I thought it'd be helpful for you when you're thinking about diffusion of innovation in particular as an organization or community level theory of change, to think about how this might apply for public health practitioners. So we know that commercial marketing often takes advantage of influential early adopters by giving out free samples of things. So popular movie stars or athletes or reality TV stars get free samples of a new product so they can be seen in the, out there in the media using this new product. And then oftentimes they're tweeting about it. And the idea with commercial marketing is that this can help to tip the popularity scale. So if you find early adopters out there that you can provide these free products to and they provide these free products to and they are then seen using it and talking about it and highlighting how great they think it is, this can help tip the popularity scale. So this is done often in in commercial marketing. For just an extender activity for you to do on your own time after today's webinar, think about how we as public health practitioners might take advantage of this idea. How might we identify early adopters of health promotion or particular behavior change interventions? How do I identify them? How do we provide the the innovation itself? And then you might want to be thinking about this both locally and globally. So just as an activity for you to do on your own time after today's webinar, to really think about how we can apply diffusion of innovation theory when it comes to our our public health practitioner work. Another brief activity that I want you to be thinking about is more broadly. So not just the diffusion of innovation, but in the next several weeks or as you're preparing for your CPH exam, think about the different constructs from various theories of change that we've been talking about and really use it as an example of ways to think about the programs that you're currently working on or programs that you're familiar with. So regardless of what type of work environment you're in now, for those of you who are still finishing up school, think about something, some type of research project that you're working on, or if you're in a practice based setting, or if you're in a clinic or health department, for example, think about some of those theories that we've discussed today. Identify some of those key constructs and then see how you can apply it to some of the programs that you're currently working on right now. I have a final resource for you that I wanted to share. Again, it's free for download. This is a really nice guide by the National Cancer Institute. It covers many of the additional theories beyond what I have time to cover in today's webinar. But I encourage you to check this out when you're preparing for the exam. It's a very nice resource when we're thinking about different theories and how they're applied in public health practice. Okay, so we are going to go into like the the third section of today's talk where we're going to be talking about different components of of health promotion and disease prevention. And I wanted to start this last section before our break by talking about what those two terms mean. So specifically, health promotion and prevention. So here are the World Health Organization definitions. I think they're pretty clear, concise and generalizable. But I just want to make sure that that we go through these, just to make sure you're familiar with with how the WHO defines these terms. So health promotion is the process of enabling people to increase control over their health and its determinants. And health promotion activities focus on changing individuals' knowledge, attitudes and skills, as well as enacting laws, policies and regulations that address air and water quality, housing, food supply, income and working conditions. The WHO definition of prevention is this. Approaches and activities aimed at reducing the likelihood that a disease or disorder will affect an individual, interrupting or slowing the process of the disorder or reducing disability. And so as you read these definitions, I'm hoping you hear some echoes of what we've talked about earlier when we're when we're considering the socio ecological model and different levels of influence that can play a part in behavior change, both at the among individuals, but also among communities and societies more broadly. So this is CDC's framework for public health action. It's a really nice visual of a health impact pyramid. What the pyramid talks about is different interventions at different levels of the socio ecological model. But in this pyramid, there is a clear preference for those that give you the biggest bang for your buck in a sense. So the preference for those that have the largest impact are those that are shown by the widest two levels at the bottom of the pyramid. The strategy examples that CDC provides in this pyramid for each level are listed in green on the right. So let's kind of walk through the pyramid going from the bottom to the top. The bottom pure of the tier of the pyramid represents changes in socio economic factors. So things like poverty reduction or improved education. These are often referred to as the social determinants of health that form the basic foundation of a society. CDC would suggest that these, if you change these factors, you've got the largest impact on health outcomes. As we move up, the second tier of the pyramid represents interventions that change the environmental context. So changing where we live, where we work and where we play to really make healthy options the default choice, regardless of an individual's education, income or service provision. So the defining characteristic of the second tier of intervention is that individuals would have to expend significant effort not to benefit from them. So a nice example that they provide here is fluoridated water. Fluoridated water is quite difficult to avoid when it's in the public supply. And so not only does fluoridation improve individual health by reducing tooth decay, it also provides economic benefits by reducing health spending and productivity losses. Other contextual factors that you might want to think about at the second tier include things that create healthier defaults, such as improving road or vehicle design. So things like seat belts or speed bumps, even car seat regulations. Eliminating lead and asbestos exposures is also an example of changing the context. Let me give you one final example of the second tier of the pyramid where we're talking about changing the context. Modern diets contain many times the minimum daily requirement of sodium. Most of that comes from packaged foods and restaurant meals. And as a consequence, this can make it quite difficult for individuals to control their sodium intake. So reducing dietary sodium can have an impact on reducing hypertension at the population level. So a healthier food environment can be created by decreasing the levels of salt that we have in our packaged foods. This is exactly what's happening in the United Kingdom where they're changing the context. In the UK, they have introduced four year sodium reduction targets in packaged products that are sold in in the population. And so the idea is if we can reduce dietary sodium in packaged foods, that can have an impact on hypertension at the population level. And again, that's making the individual's decision, the healthy decision being the default decision. As we move up in the pyramid, the third level represents one time or infrequent protective behaviors that do not require ongoing clinical care. These generally have less impact than interventions represented by the bottom two tiers because they necessitate reaching people as individuals rather than collectively. The fourth level of the pyramid represents ongoing clinical intervention. So these are things like providing prescriptions for high blood pressure or diabetes or high cholesterol. And then the fifth and final tier of the pyramid way up at the top represents activities that are designed to help individuals rather than entire populations. So this is why you see the that top orange component of the pyramid, including things like counseling or education. So you've probably have heard of the words prevention based on the WHO definition that we just went over a few slides ago. But you've you've probably also heard the idea of primary prevention versus secondary prevention. But I want to walk you through what and how we think about prevention based on the disease continuum. So in this slide, under the orange heading, you've got both primary and secondary prevention strategies. And on the right side, you've got the clinical services, which include tertiary prevention strategies. So let me walk you through each of these three types of prevention. Think about primary prevention as really aiming to prevent disease or injury before it occurs. So this can be done by preventing exposures to hazards that in fact cause a disease or an injury. This also can be done by altering unhealthy or unsafe behaviors that leads to disease or injury. And then also increasing resistance to disease or injury should someone be faced with exposure to them. So some of the examples that I list here include airbags, immunizations, using sunscreen, workplace safety regulations. So again, you are doing strategies to prevent the disease from occurring in the first place. Next, we talk about secondary prevention. And this really aims to identify a disease at its earliest stage and reduce the impact of the disease or the injury that has already occurred by initiating prompt appropriate disease management. So this can be done by detecting and treating a disease as soon as possible to either halt or slow its progress. This can also be done by encouraging personal strategies to prevent re injury or recurrence of a particular disease. You can also do secondary prevention by implementing programs to return people to their original health and functioning status to try to prevent long term problems down the line. Third and finally, we talk about tertiary prevention. And this really has the goal of softening the impact of an ongoing illness or injury that has lasting effects. So you do tertiary prevention by helping people manage their long term, often complex health problems. So things like chronic diseases or permanent impairments. And the idea is that if we can improve as much as possible their ability to function as well as their quality of life. So again, tertiary really focuses on reducing or minimizing the consequence of a disease after it has already developed. And the goal is really to eliminate or in the best case, try to at least delay the onset of complications and disability due to the disease. Now I've listed this in blue under clinical services because most medical interventions fall into this category, which is why it's got that clinical services heading. So we talk about the primary, secondary, tertiary prevention based on the disease continuum. But let's think about prevention activities as targeting different groups, kind of meeting folks where they're at. So we think about universal prevention strategies that are really designed to reach an entire population, like a school or a community without regard to individual risk factors. They're really intended to reach a quite large audience. So I'm going to give you some examples of these three forms of prevention activities using example from the field of substance abuse. So if you're doing a universal prevention strategy designed to reach an entire population, this would be example of doing substance abuse education using the school based curricula for all kids within a school district. So again, all members of the community are benefi benefiting from the universal prevention effort, not just specific individuals or groups. Second, we have selective prevention strategies. And these really are targeting subgroups of a general population that have a higher than average risk. So that's why it's called selective. So again, using our example from the substance abuse field, this would include mentoring programs aimed at kids or at teenagers who have substance abusing parents or families or those who even live in high crime or impoverished neighborhoods that have a higher than average rate of substance abuse problems. So again, it's selective because you're targeting particular subgroups within a general population that have a higher than average risk. The third type of prevention activity is what we call indicated. These are interventions that identify individuals who are experiencing early signs of the risk behavior or other related problem behaviors. And then you're targeting them explicitly with special programs. So again, using an example from the substance abuse literature, this would be a program for high school students who are experiencing problem behaviors like truancy or failing academic grades, suicidal ideation and early warning signs of substance abuse problems. So again, from universal down to indicated, you're going from those that reach the entire population and then funneling down to those interventions that identify individuals with early signs of risk behavior. Okay, so we're now going to move to just a nice example for you that I think is quite helpful. So when we're doing health promotion and disease prevention, it's very important that our programs are evidence based. And our programs really go through a nice vetting process with independent panels where interventions are systematically reviewed and then compared to usual and customary treatment. And when you can demonstrate that the intervention in fact works, you've got some evidence base behind it to suggest that that's the case. There's a really wonderful free resource that's available to you called the Community Guide. This includes recommendations for public health interventions. The guide is organized by category. So everything from car safety seats to immunizations to diabetes care. And it demonstrates that specific task force recommendations and findings, as well as indicates if a particular intervention is recommended or whether the evidence at this time is is not sufficient to make a full recommendation. The Community Guide is updated on a regular basis by CDC. And I've provided the website on the bottom of this slide. So this is a really nice resource that I encourage you to take a look at as you're preparing for your CPH exam. As a way to give you some examples from the Community Guide, I went back to our four leading behavioral risk factors. So as you might recall, those include tobacco, physical inactivity, healthy diet and alcohol. And from the Community Guide, these are some examples of evidence based strategies to address these major behavioral risk factors as well as social risk factors. So if you look at the top left, for example, this is the tobacco component. What you see here is that there are recommended strategies that span across various levels of the socio ecological model. So things really could be at the individual level, like such as smoking cessation programs. But then you see things that move up the 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 model itself getting up to the societal level. So things like cigarette excise taxes, smoke free environments, things are changing things at higher levels of the model. And then there are other examples here when you have time just to review about physical activity, healthy diet and then alcohol misuse. So we're in the home stretch here before we take our break. What I want to do is now go to pardon me, the community health practice principles. So when we're thinking about engaging with communities, there really I think there are some key principles that might be part of your exam. And I certainly want you to be aware of them as you're doing your preparation. So the first principle in community health practice is identifying your stakeholders. You're often working in collaboration with other community members and community groups, and they truly become your partners. So when we're thinking about how we identify stakeholders, these include your program sponsor, various decision makers, key organizations and individuals that are then affected by your program. So when you're working in a community, you typically put together an advisory board of stakeholders. And there should be representation from each of the groups that you see here listed on this first bullet. So in my work in North Carolina with an advisory board for a a group of interventions that we were doing with people living with HIV, we developed an advisory board that included physicians, nurses, social workers, health educators. We also included in our advisory board, people who were living with HIV that would be impacted by our intervention. We included various community groups as so things like the Pride Center that were working with LGBT community members. And then even family members and loved ones of people living with HIV were invited to participate in our advisory board. Again, recognizing that we're needing to work in collaboration with the community members because they truly became our partners. Another key feature of community practice is what we call community mobilization. So this is really a collective effort by the community members themselves to work together to identify a problem and increase awareness about it among community members to be able to advocate for change. The third principle is what we call community assessment. So before we design an intervention, we really need to be thinking about the strengths and challenges that are currently being experienced by the community. One of the resources that I found helpful when we were conducting a community health needs assessment in Northwest Mississippi in one of our studies was to really pull together publicly available data. It was very low cost to be able to supplement the data that we were collecting from our surveys and focus groups and key informant interviews. And so there's a really nice data set from CDC and I've provided that link here when you're thinking about community assessment to be able to map community assets and community capacity when we're thinking about addressing needs. The final principle that you see here for community health practice is what's called community based participatory research. The acronym for that is CBPR. So this is a partnership approach to research that equitably involves community members, organizational representatives and researchers in all aspects of the research process and in which all partners contribute expertise and share decision making and ownership. So this is not just about the university and our the outside researchers coming in and identifying and prioritizing things for communities. It's really a partnership approach involving community members and organizations, again, in all stages of the research process and involving shared decision making. Some of the key kind of elements of CBPR that I want you to be familiar with is that the approach really recognizes communities as the unit of identity, not individuals that comprise the community. It's really thinking about building on the strengths and resources that already exist within a community. And again, facilitating that collaborative partnership in all phases of the research. CBPR often involves cyclical iterative process that can be months and months and years of time. And importantly, I think we want to make sure when you're thinking about CBPR is the idea that you want to disseminate findings and knowledge gained to all partners. So this is not just about the research, the research team, but also about the community members and the organizational representatives that are part of the community that you the organizational representatives that are part of the community that you're collaborating with. Okay, so I now am going to launch questions three, four, and five for our poll that have covered this last section of part one of our discussion today during the webinar. So here is question three. So from the CDC Health Impact Pyramid, colonoscopies and immunizations are examples of? The choices are counseling and educational factors, clinical interventions, long-lasting protective interventions, or changing the context? So take a moment to answer this question. Give folks another few seconds. So terrific. So the majority of you got this answer correct. This is level three or tier three, which is long-lasting protective intervention. So immunizations, brief interventions, colonoscopies, these are at the long-lasting protective intervention. The reason why it's the third level is that really remember that these levels, interventions at this level represent one-time or infrequent protective interventions that don't require ongoing clinical care. So they tend to have less of an impact compared to the second, sorry, the bottom two levels of the pyramid, the changing the context and socioeconomic factors. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next question, which is question four. So dietary, my apologies. Okay, there we are. Dietary counseling for people at risk of colorectal cancer is an example of primary prevention, secondary prevention, tertiary prevention, or treatment? So take a moment to answer that question, please. Give folks just another minute. Okay, great. Most of you got this correct. The correct answer is primary prevention. Remember, for primary prevention, you're really trying to prevent people from getting the disease in the first place. And so secondary prevention is typically when after somebody has in fact has the disease, where you're trying to ameliorate and reduce some of the impact of it. Dietary counseling for people who are at risk of cancer but in fact don't have it yet is a nice classic example of primary prevention. Okay, so now we'll move to the fifth question, which is the last question for this section. So screening for hepatitis C virus infection of patients with a history of injection drug use is an example of? Choices, primary prevention, secondary prevention, tertiary prevention, or treatment? Just take another moment or two for this last question. Super, okay. So secondary prevention is correct. So screenings are almost always considered secondary prevention strategies. So again, you're trying to identify the disease at its earliest stage to then first identify the disease and then be able to provide prompt treatment. So we know that people who have a history of injection drug use are at increased risk of contracting hepatitis C. So again, we're being able to provide that screening to be able to identify individuals who are infected at their earliest stage and then be able to provide prompt treatment. Okay. So what we're now going to do is take a 10-minute break, and then we'll pick back up to go over part two of today's webinar. My time here says 10:35 Eastern, so I'm going to pick back up at 10:45. So take a nice break, relax your brain, stretch your muscles, and I'll chat back with you in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
My clock says it's 10:45. So we're going to start back up again on the second half of this morning's webinar on the social and behavioral sciences in public health. So for the first part, we covered patterns of disease and the socio-ecological model. We then went through a wide variety of theories of change and then finished up talking about some of the key principles of health promotion and disease prevention. For the second part, we're going to start by covering the ethical issues that need to be explored as part of the planning and evaluation process of public health programs. And then we're going to go through some common planning models used in our field that are commonly reviewed in public health curricula to really help you best prepare for your CPH exam. We'll finish things up by covering evaluation methods and then conclude with scaling up programs and then also sustainability. So let's start with ethical issues in planning and evaluation. The first thing I want to do is give you a very brief overview of some key points in history that led up to the Belmont Report, which guides institutional research using human subjects as research participants. So this is really a quick overview. But one of the, some of the best ways I think we learn about ethics is about learning from our past mistakes. And so we'll start with the 1930s and the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. And I'll go into greater detail about some of the details about that particular study. But let me walk you through some of the other major ethical developments over time. So the Nuremberg Code was issued in 1946 after World War II. And this really was about the voluntary consent of the human subject being absolutely essential. The UN's Universal Declaration of Human Rights was also a key milestone in the documentation and the history of human rights. And so you see that in 1948. This was drafted by representatives from regions all over the world. And the declaration was proclaimed by the UN General Assembly in 1948, as I said. It really was a common standard of achievements and set out for the first time that fundamental human rights needed to be universally protected. In 1963, we had the Willabook Study. Willabook was a state-supported institution for children with intellectual disabilities. It was located in Staten Island. And the point in history is that it was one of the most unethical medical experiments ever performed in children in our country. We then fast forward to 1964, which was the Declaration of Helsinki. This set, created a set of ethical principles regarding human experimentation developed for the medical community by the World Medical Association. And it's widely regarded as the cornerstone document on human research ethics. We'll talk about, like I said, Tuskegee Study, which got public exposure in 1972 and then subsequently led to some other events in the late 70s, including federal protections for human research subjects and then ultimately the Belmont Report that came out in 1979. So let's talk about the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. So in 1932, the US Public Health Service was working with the Tuskegee Institute. And they began a study with the intent to record the natural history of syphilis in blacks, particularly black men. And it was called the Tuskegee Study of Untreated Syphilis in the Negro Male. When the study was initiated in the early 1930s, there were no proven treatments for the disease. The study initially involved 600 black men in Macon County, Alabama. 399 of them had syphilis, 201 did not have the disease. The study was conducted without the benefit of patients-informed consent. So researchers essentially told the men that they were being treated for, quote, "bad blood." So this is a local term that was used to describe several ailments, including syphilis, anemia, and fatigue. In truth, though, these men did not receive the proper treatment needed to cure their illness. In exchange for taking part in the study, the men did receive free medical exams and free meals. Although originally projected to last only about six months, this study went on for more than 40 years. So the study was continually reviewed through this 40-year period by the US Public Health Service officials. And it was continually extended every single year based on the argument that stopping the study would interfere with the benefits to medical science of studying this particular disease. So even when penicillin became the drug of choice to treat and cure syphilis in 1947, researchers did not offer it to the subjects. So a cure was available, but it was knowingly and intentionally withheld from men who could have benefited from receiving the treatment. As many as 100 men died of syphilis during this study. When a physician, oh, excuse me, when a participant did die, researchers would offer their families free burials in exchange for the right to do autopsies so they could gather their final data for the study. Now, the key whistleblower in the Tuskegee Syphilis Study was Peter Buxton. In 1966, he sent a letter to the Director of the Division of Venereal Diseases. And he essentially said, "I'm really concerned about the morality of this experiment. This has been going on for more than 30 years, and this shouldn't be happening." Here's a quote from the letter that he sent to the Director. He said, quote, "The excuses and justifications that might have been offered in 1932 are no longer relevant. Today, it would be morally unethical to begin such a study with such a group." Pardon me. So let's go back to slide there. So in July 1972, an Associated Press story about the study really caused public outcry. And that led the Assistant Secretary for Health and Scientific Affairs to appoint advisory panel to essentially review the study. The panel concluded that the men had agreed freely to be examined and treated. However, there was no evidence that the researchers had informed them of the study and its real purpose. In fact, the men had been misled and had not been given all the facts that were required to provide informed consent. And as I mentioned earlier, the men were never given adequate treatment for the disease after penicillin was discovered. So the advisory panel found nothing to show that the subjects were ever given the choice of quitting the study, even when this new highly effective treatment of penicillin became widely used. So the advisory panel concluded that the Tuskegee Study was ethically unjustifies, unjustified, excuse me. The knowledge gained was sparse when compared to the risks that were being posed to these men. In October 1972, the panel advised stopping the study, and that actually happened the next month in November. In 1974, a $10 million out-of-court settlement was reached. The United States government promised to give lifetime medical benefits and burial services to all living participants. But it didn't happen until 1997, where the federal government formally apologized for this, when Bill Clinton issued a formal apology. So even to this day, it makes me sad to think that it took so many years for such a horrible injustice to take so long for us to publicly apologize for it. 2004, the last Tuskegee participant died in January. So scientific research has produced substantial social benefits. It has also posed some troubling ethical questions. Public attention was clearly drawn to these questions by reports of abuse of human subjects, not only in biomedical experiments at Tuskegee, but also experiments that were done during World War II. So in 1974, Congress passed the National Research Act, which essentially created the National Commission for the Protection of Human Subjects of Biomedical and Behavioral Research. And the goal of this commission was really to identify the basic ethical principles that should guide the conduct of research when we're involving humans. The Belmont Report was subsequently created by the commission and issued in September of 1978. It summarized key ethical principles as well as guidelines for research involving humans. The three principles that were identified include respect for persons, beneficence, and justice. They also identified three primary areas of application, including informed consent, assessment of risks and benefits, and selection of subjects. So let me walk you through importantly, these three core principles that were identified by the Belmont Report. Again, the first of which is what's called respect for persons. And this really has two parts. The first is that individuals should be treated as autonomous agents. And second, that persons with diminished autonomy are entitled to protection. So this principle is really, again, two separate moral requirements. First is the requirement to acknowledge autonomy. And second, the requirement to protect those who have diminished autonomy. The second ethical principle is what we call beneficence. So people are treated in an ethical manner, not only by respecting their decisions and protecting them from harm, but also making efforts to secure their well-being. So two of the general rules that have been formulated in the sense of beneficence is first, do no harm. And two, maximize possible benefits while minimizing possible harms. The third ethical principle is what we call justice. So this is a question of, you know, who ought to receive the benefits of research? And who bears its burdens? So this is really a question of justice and the sense of fairness in distribution. As we can see from the Tuskegee Syphilis Study, it used disadvantaged rural black men to study the untreated course of a disease that was by no means confined to just disadvantaged rural black men. These subjects were deprived of effective treatment in order not to interrupt the project long after such treatment became widely available. And so we can see how conceptions of justice are relevant to research involving human subjects. For example, how we select research subjects really needs to be scrutinized in order to determine whether some classes are being systematically selected simply because of their easy availability or their compromised position, rather than for reasons directly related to the problem being studied. So the Belmont Report is really one of the leading works concerning ethics and healthcare research. It allows for the protection of human participants in clinical trials and in research studies. The Belmont Report still to this day and will continue in the future to serve as an essential reference for institutional review boards when they're reviewing human subjects' research proposals and really to ensure that the research that's being proposed meets the ethical foundations of the regulations. I've included for you here a couple of additional resources for additional review on ethics. The first is the idea of deception in research. And so this is a link to the Stanford Prison Experiment. The second is the issue of responsible conduct for research with a link to a particular YouTube video. I will say in advance, I apologize that the music for this video is less than stellar. Perhaps you'll find it a bit comical. But the content otherwise is really a nice summary of responsible conduct for research. And it's not too long. It's only about seven minutes long or so. Okay, so what we're going to do now is launch the next poll question. And this is pertaining to the first part of what we've covered here in part one, part two of our webinar this afternoon. So question six is, which of the following is not an ethical principle outlined in the Belmont Report? And I'll give you just a moment to answer this, please. So the choice options are justice, respect for persons, universality, and then beneficence. Let's take just another moment to answer this. Super, yeah. Universality is not a principle. The other three are clearly principles outlined in the Belmont Report. Great. Okay, so now we'll move on, starting to talk about different public health priorities. So when we start covering planning models, I thought it'd be helpful to begin by reviewing that all planning models are initiated with some type of assessment about the strengths and weaknesses that are affecting the population and then finding some way to prioritize those issues and challenges that are confronting the population. So you could think about this at a school or a workplace, neighborhood, city, state, national, even international level. So there's clearly a process that we go through to look at public health problems based on the magnitude of the key diseases. And then we subsequently prioritize that. So here are some examples of priority public health issues from both CDC and DHHS at the national level. The left-hand side, you'll see CDC's Winnable Battles. So these are high-magnitude public health problems that have effective evidence-based interventions associated with them. And then the Department of Health and Human Services also has a set of priorities for health disparities. And those are listed here as well. Okay, so before we get into the details about planning, really, the process that we go through at the national level for identifying priorities for public health research is what we call Healthy People. This happens every 10 years since 1980. And the Healthy People objectives are really the foundation for many federal prevention initiatives. The goal of Healthy People is really to increase quality and years of life and eliminate health disparities by providing that framework for our public health priorities, establishing measurable objectives and benchmarks that then can be used to guide health planning over time. So there really are these benchmarks given with each objective that can be used by both state and local public health organizations so they can monitor their progress up to the next decade. So they're able to ask that question, you know, are we in fact making progress toward the benchmark that's been established? We're currently in Healthy People 2020. Again, this provides a comprehensive set of 10-year national goals and objectives for improving American health. Right now, Healthy People 2020 has 42 different topic areas, more than 1,200 objectives. And so what I've added here at the bottom of this page is a link to a YouTube video by Dr. Howard Ko, who at the time was Assistant Secretary for Health at DHHS when Healthy People 2020 was launched. And I thought it might be a nice way for you to just hear a little bit more about Healthy People, some of its goals and initiatives. Okay, so now let's move to talk about the major planning model in public health. Similar to my earlier point this morning, that there's many different theories of change. There are also many, many different planning models that are out there. So I've had to be selective in the interest of time we have together this morning for our webinar, while also trying to best prepare you for your CPH exam. So, but I will say that Precedent Proceed is clearly one of the most well-known and widely-used planning models. So I'm going to talk about that first. And then I'll spend a bit of time talking about a couple other planning models and then review some common elements across these various models as well. So Precedent Proceed is a framework that was proposed in 1974 by Larry Green at CDC. And it really was to help public health program planners, policymakers, and evaluators really analyze situations and help to design health programs efficiently. Precedent Proceed provides a comprehensive structure for assessing health and quality of life needs and for designing, implementing, and evaluating programs to meet those explicit needs. One of the purposes and the guiding principles of this particular model is really to direct your initial attention to outcomes rather than inputs. So it really guides planners through a process that starts with figuring out what do we desire our outcomes to be? And then really working backwards in the causal chain to identify a mix of strategies for achieving those objectives. Now, it's called Precedent Proceed because it has two distinct parts, each with four phases. And so the first phase is what we call Precedent. And we're going to, I'm going to walk you through each of these four steps here. So the first is what we call social diagnosis. This is where you're really essentially asking the community, what do you want? What do you need? What's going to make a difference in improving your health? And you identify a key health outcome from the community. The second phase is what we call epidemiological diagnosis. This is where you're looking at health behaviors, interpersonal or organizational factors that influence the outcome that you've identified. And when you're thinking about figuring out which risk factors are most meaningful, but also most changeable when you're developing program objectives. The third phase is what's called the educational and organizational diagnosis. This is where you identify the predisposing, enabling, and reinforcing factors that can either help or hinder you when you're trying to change those factors that you identified in the previous phase. The fourth and final component of Precedent is what's called administrative and policy diagnosis. And this is where you identify and try to change those internal issues and policies as well as external policies to try to generate the funding or other resources that you might need for your intervention. So what you find in phases three and four leads to your ultimate intervention plan. Okay, so now that we've gone through Precedent, let's now spend some time talking about Proceed. This is really the intervention and its evaluation. And just like Precedent, it's got four phases. So phase five is the implementation. This is when you actually initiate and conduct the intervention. Phase six is what's called the process evaluation. This is where you're asking yourself the question, are you actually doing the things that you planned to do? The things that you said you were going to do in phase five? This phase determines whether the program is being implemented according to the protocol and determines whether the objectives of the programs are ultimately being met. Phase seven is what we call the impact evaluation. Is the intervention having the desired impact on our target population? And this is where you're ultimately looking at the effectiveness of the program with regards to intermediate objectives as well as those changes in predisposing, enabling, and reinforcing factors. The final stage of Proceed is what's called the outcome evaluation. And you ask yourself the question, is the intervention really leading to the outcome, the desired result that we envisioned way back in phase one? So this is where you're measuring changes in terms of overall objectives, changes in health and social benefits, or quality of life. And so it really helps determine the effect of the program and how it's made a difference in the health and quality of life of the community. I thought it'd be helpful for you to see what this looks like as a visual. So again, we're kind of working backwards when we do Precedent Proceed. So the first four phases are across the top, but you actually start on the far right side. So phase one is when you're identifying community needs. You move to the left in phase two, where you identify risk and protective factors. Then you determine what strengths you have or barriers you might face as predisposing, reinforcing, and enabling factors. And then finally, in phase four, you identify those resources that you need to carry out the intervention. You then move down to the bottom of the framework to the final four stages. And you move from left to right from phases five through eight. So you implement, then you do process, impact, and outcome evaluation. So this is a really, really helpful tool, commonly used, and something that's very important for you to be familiar with when you're preparing for your CPH exam. Okay, so let's shift gears a bit and talk about social marketing. This is another planning model that's been used with great success, particularly in the last two decades with media-based interventions. So there are four Ps that we use in marketing: product, price, place, and promotion. And one key component in social marketing is the role of our marketing techniques. This is how we put together the primary target audience, or also known as our consumer, at the center of every decision to, in a sense, buy a product. So in the public health sense, the product is the behavior change or the health program or the technological component that's meant for public health change. The price is the adoption of the behavior change. This might include monetary incentives. We might want to be thinking about this in the terms of how we minimize costs or barriers for our target population to make the desired behavioral change. Third, again, is place. So this is where the product is available. So I gave you an example earlier about having like a mobile clinic. So an intervention that uses social marketing and emphasizes this place component might offer mobile clinics in neighborhoods to offer flu vaccines, for example. The fourth and final P is what we call promotion. So this is how you promote these first three pieces using different persuasive strategies. So like other health planning strategies and models, social marketing clearly draws on behavioral research. Some of the features of social marketing, like identifying a target audience, are not particularly unique to social marketing. We know that Precedent Proceed also emphasizes the need to really understand your target audience. Okay, so let me just briefly show you a couple of other key planning models. I would search these on your own time to really understand their features, their components. So I've included the Assessment Protocol for Excellence in Public Health as well as match, patch, and map. What I think would be most useful in our time, though, is, before we leave this section of the webinar, I want to point out that there's really are some fundamental common features that are part of really good planning models. And these features are listed here on the slide. So community involvement and mobilization, I can't emphasize enough. Needs assessment at both a community or organizational level, trying to identify strengths, needs, challenges, in particular, communities and organizations. How we select target audiences is key. Fourth, how we develop what we call SMART objectives. So these are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound objectives and what those indicators might be. Planning models always have an action plan of how we develop and implement the intervention as well as how we evaluate not only the process, but what the outcomes are of our program. And then importantly, you want to be thinking about institutionalization. You want to have a planning model in place that, that one clearly works when you're, when you're implementing your intervention. But you want to make it entrenched in part of your community such that it's institutionalized over time. Okay, so now I'm going to launch the next two poll questions. These are questions seven and eight, kind of covering this first section of part two of our webinar today. So question seven, in what phase of Precedent are you assessing the community's wants and needs to improve health? Choices are A, social diagnosis, B, epidemiological diagnosis, C, educational and organizational diagnosis, or D, administrative and policy diagnosis. And I'll give you a moment to answer this, please. Just take another moment to finish up. Great. Social diagnosis, exactly. So social diagnosis, again, is when you're asking the community, what do you want? What do you need? What are your, what are some of your desires to really try to improve broader community health and quality of life? So thank you so much for those of you who participated in that question. We're now going to do one more question at this stage, and that's question eight. So the quick poll says, in what phase of Proceed are you measuring the extent to which the intervention is? to which the intervention is progressing as you planned? Choices are implementation, process evaluation, impact evaluation, or outcome evaluation. Okay, great, process evaluation, exactly. Right, so remember, for process evaluation, that's when you're really trying to determine, did the intervention proceed as I planned? Did we do what we said we were going to do, what we set out to do? Where implementation really is just about actually doing it. Remember, impact and outcome are shorter and longer-term objectives. But processes, did we really do what we say we were going to do, what we intended? Okay, thank you very much for those of you who responded to those poll questions. We're now going to move on and talk about program evaluation. And so we'll then finish up after that, going over scaling up and then sustainability. So as we know, public health programs aim to prevent or control disease, injury, disability, and death. Over time, we know this task has become more complex, and consequently, programs themselves have become more complex. Increasingly, public health programs are addressing large societal problems, the solutions to which must engage large numbers of community members and organizations in a pretty substantial coalition. So more often than not, public health programs involve significant and difficult changes in attitudes, risk and protective behaviors as well. And so in addition to that, the context in which our public health programs operate has also become more challenging and more complex as well. So programs that work well in some settings might fail miserably in others because of social, socioeconomic, interpersonal, or even interorganizational settings in which they're rooted. At the same time that programs have become more complex, the demands for accountability from policymakers and other stakeholders has increased as well. And so these changes in the environment in which public health programs operate really implies that strong program evaluation is essential more than ever before. So you might be asking, what exactly is program evaluation? I tend to think about program evaluation as a way of paying attention to documenting and measuring the implementation of the program and its successes in order to figure out whether or not we're achieving our intended outcomes. And then we use that information to be accountable to key stakeholders. So it's really the systematic process of both using qualitative and quantitative measures to answer questions about the nature, magnitude of the program. Processes, so are things being implemented and carrying out in the manner we intended? Outcomes, are we achieving the goals we set to accomplish? And then efficiency, are our programs' activities being produced with appropriate use of resources, like staff time and budget as well? So let me walk you through these four different questions that we want to be thinking about with program evaluation. And we'll start with the nature and magnitude of the problem. So this is kind of the logical sequencing of activities and outcomes when you're doing program evaluation. A common way to do this is what we call a needs assessment. And this is really to determine the prevalence of the problem in the target population, what the consequences are, and whether certain groups are more affected than others. So the common methods that we use when doing needs assessment include key informant interviews, agency records. We often hold community forums where we invite members of the community to come together and hear some of our questions that we have about identifying problems. We can often use public data sets to get information about community-level indicators, and then also doing community surveys as well. For process evaluation, the idea behind this is really to figure out fidelity and outputs. It's the who, the what, the when, and the how many. So you might examine whether the activities are taking place, who's conducting them, who's being reached through our activities, and whether sufficient inputs have been allocated and mobilized. So this is really very important to build a database to track and monitor some of these indicators that you see listed on the right-hand part of the slide. Process evaluation really helps you to answer the question, has this program been implemented as we intended? And why or why not? Next, we come to outcome evaluation. So these are really meant to assess progress on the sequence of outcomes that the program is meant to address. Programs often describe this sequence using terms like short-term, intermediate, and long-term outcomes. Oftentimes, you might see programs use the terms proximal and distal. So proximal are those that are close to the intervention, whereas those that are distal are farther away from the intervention. So depending on the stage of development of the program and the purpose of your evaluation, outcome evaluations might include any or all of these outcomes. So they can include changes in a person's attitudes and beliefs, changes in both risk and protective factors, changes in both the social and the behavioral kind of environment, so including public and private policies, enforcement of new regulations, including even things like social norms. And then as a long-term outcome, it oftentimes looks at things like changes and trends for particular areas of morbidity and mortality. The last type of evaluation we talk about is efficiency valuation. This is where you're really comparing the costs to the effects. So cost-effectiveness, does the value or benefit of your program's outcomes exceed the cost of producing them? So for every $1 that I spend, I get this particular result. So this is really a cost-benefit analysis. You also might want to be considering the question about resources. So are your program's activities being produced with minimal use of resources, such as budget, as well as staff time? So it's really kind of thinking about the efficiency of your program itself. So let's now, I want to share with you the CDC framework for program evaluation that's used by public health departments across the country. This particular framework is a systematic method for program evaluation, and it includes six connected steps that together can be used as a starting point for when we're tailoring an intervention for a particular public health effort. So this, an order really exists to fulfill each step. So in general, the earlier steps provide the foundation for your subsequent progress in later stages. But before we walk through each of these six steps, I want to also point out the middle of the slide. So you'll see that the CDC framework has a set of 30 standards, which assess quality. And they also are determining whether or not your evaluation activities are well-designed and really working towards their potential. So these standards really ask the question, will this evaluation be effective? The 30 standards that CDC has are organized into four groups. The first is what we call utility standards. So this ensures that an evaluation will serve the information needs of your intended users. The feasibility standards ensure that the evaluation will be realistic, diplomatic, but also even frugal, in a sense. Proprietary standards ensure that the evaluation is going to be conducted legally and ethically. And then accuracy standards really ensure that your evaluation will reveal and then convey technically adequate information about the features that really determine the value or the merit of the program being evaluated. So a strong evaluation approach really ensures that the following questions can be addressed as part of your evaluation. Again, so the value of the program can be determined, and judgments can be made based on evidence. So what's going to be evaluated? What aspects of the program are considered when we're judging program performance? What standards must be reached for the program to be really considered successful? What evidence will be used to indicate how the program's been performed? And will the lessons that we learn be used to improve public health effectiveness? So now that we've kind of gone through some of the standards that you see in the center of this slide, I now want to walk you through CDC's evaluation framework to answer some of these questions I just went over, using their six steps. So step one is really about engaging your stakeholders. This includes those who are involved in program operations, those who are both served or affected by your program, as well as the primary users of the evaluation. So this is really about fostering input, participation, and shared decision-making among all those people who have an investment in the conduct of the evaluation and its findings. The second step is where you describe the program. So this includes the need, the expected effects, the activities, the resources, as well as a logic model. So this is really about evaluating fairness and accuracy, a balanced assessment of your strengths and your weaknesses, and really helps your stakeholders understand how the program's features fit together and relate in a larger context. So as a consequence, logic models are a nice graphic representation of this. The model itself includes inputs, activities, and a trajectory of outcomes for both short, intermediate, and long-term outcomes. And let me show you an example of what a logic model looks like. So here you'll see a logic model providing, again, that basic framework for an evaluation. It's a graphic that describes how a program is organized in evaluation terms. And before I walk through the blue boxes on the bottom, I really want you to think and remember that there are two key advantages, I think, in graphically displaying a logic model, as opposed to simply just defining them or listing them. First, I think there's a lot of power in visual representation. So these visual displays or graphics can be really effective learning instruments for your stakeholders. Second, a logic model really ensures that a program's process is not overlooked when you're doing evaluation. So the model really makes the evaluator accountable for looking not only at outcomes, but also at the process that you go through. So those four boxes on the bottom, let's walk you through those. The first of which is what we call resources. Some people call them inputs. These are really the contributions, the investments, the resources that go into your program. The activities, the next box, is what you're actually really doing to reach your established objectives. And I kind of think about this as the nuts and bolts of what you're actually carrying out in your intervention. Outputs, next, are the activities or the events or the products that reach people who participate or who are targeted. So outputs, you often have measurements like the number of staff that were trained in a particular program, or the number of community members who attended a public health meeting. And then finally, you've got outcomes at the end. The outcomes are the results or the changes for individuals, groups, communities, or organizations that you're trying to make a change. Our next step in the framework is focusing the evaluation design to really assess the issues of greatest concern to stakeholders while using time and resources as efficiently as possible. So this step is really about planning in advance where the evaluation is headed and what steps you're going to take. And it tends to be a fairly iterative process, and it continues until you really have a focused approach to figure out what evaluation questions your stakeholders are going to agree with in terms of those that are most usable, feasible, and accurate. Different evaluation questions are relevant, based on different stages of the program that you see listed here. So clearly, when you're thinking about implementation fidelity questions, those are really critical when you're initiating a program. Whereas long-term objective questions are appropriate once the program has documented some type of short-term or intermediate effects. And again, you want to make sure that your stakeholders are involved at each stage of the program. Step Four is where you're gathering credible evidence. So the focus here is really on figuring out and really strengthening your evaluation judgments and the recommendations that follow. So if possible, you really want to use existing data that you have available to you. So this is where you're compiling the information that stakeholders perceive as trustworthy and as relevant. Your evidence might be experimental, it might be observational, it might be qualitative or quantitative or both. But you really want to make sure that if adequate data is available, you want to be able to access it and then be able to use that in conjunction with the new data that you've collected. The fifth stage is what we call justifying your conclusions. So this is by linking them to the evidence that you've gathered, whether it's the existing data or the new data that you've collected, and then judging that data against agreed-upon values or standards that are set by the stakeholders. So you're really trying to justify your conclusions on the basis of evidence. And this step really involves claims regarding that the program was warranted based on the basis of the data that's been compared against, again, this defensible ideas about merit, value, and significance. The sixth and final step that we talk about is ensuring use and then shared lessons learned. So this is about design preparation, but also about feedback and follow-up. This step really involves ensuring that the stakeholders are aware of the evaluation procedures, as well as the findings, and that the findings are considered in decisions or actions that affect the future of the program. So your choice of dissemination of materials should really be tailored based on who your target audience is. So if your target audience is the, oh, my apologies, there we go, is the scientific community, how you disseminate information might be quite different in terms of tailoring versus when you're presenting information to public access, for example, at a community forum, or the type of presentation that you're giving to stakeholders. And so thinking about various communication dissemination plans, depending on who your target audience is, and then tailoring accordingly. So a model that's often used in addition to the CDC framework for program planning and evaluation, it's what's called the REAIME model. So like the CDC framework that we just walked through, REAIME has a strong emphasis on translating programs into practice. So this particular framework is designed to really enhance the quality, the speed, and the public health impact of efforts to translate, again, your research into practice. And it's got five different steps that spell out REAIME. So the R stands for reach. This is reaching your intended target population. So you're answering the question, can your program attract a large and representative percentage of your target population? The E stands for effectiveness, how effective is your program, and how do I know that it's effective? The A is for adoption, is the program feasible in real-world settings? The I is for implementation. So can the program be consistently implemented across program elements, even if I have different staff or if I'm in a different setting? And can it be implemented with fidelity? And then the M stands for maintenance. Does the program include principles to ensure long-term improvements, as well as sustainability over time? So we're in the last stretch here, home stretch at the end of our webinar here in Friday morning. And what we're going to be talking about in these final slides is dissemination and scaling up. So think about dissemination as the targeted distribution of both intervention materials, as well as information for either a specific public health audience or a clinical practice audience. So this is really about wider adoption of evidence-based health promotion practices, depending on, make sure we've got ones that have been tested and proven to be effective. So this is really about bridging gaps between public health, clinical research, and everyday practice by building and strengthening your scientific knowledge base about the mechanisms of action, where we can use this information and use interventions and use our scientifically-based clinical practices in a variety of settings. Scaling up really refers to doing something in a big way to improve some aspect of a population's health. But importantly, you want to be able to increase that program impact while still maintaining high quality. So again, within this broad definition, you can think about scaling up two components of your logic model. So for your inputs or your resources in your logic model, scaling up is really about mobilizing more funds or having more staff available to carry something out. The outputs would be providing more services and performing better, so kind of a quality-efficiency access equation. Your outputs could be reaching more people, so having greater coverage, but also attracting more clients, so maybe improving utilization over time. And then the impact, again, as you might imagine, is all about reducing morbidity and mortality. There's four general categories of scaling up, and I'm going to use for you another example to help you kind of understand these categories. So back in July of 2013, the Joint United Nations Program on HIV/AIDS, known as UNAIDS, launched a new framework to accelerate action when we're talking about reaching people with lifesaving HIV medications, what's called antiretroviral treatment. And their goal was to reach 15 million people across the globe by 2015. This is a goal set by the UN back in 2011. So the framework that they were using really offered countries and partners both practical and innovative ways to increase the number of people accessing antiretroviral medicines, so scaling up. The idea was the scaling up of ARTH was really an unprecedented success story for public health. And their hope was that substantial scale up of access to these medicines would provide a unique opportunity to really push the HIV epidemic into an irreversible decline. So the first category of scaling up that we talk about is quantitative. So this is when you're adding a new target audience or expanding into a new geographic area. When you think about the UNAIDS framework for extending antiretroviral treatment by 2015, this is really about increasing the number of people across the globe, including new geographic areas, to have them access to antiretroviral medicines. Functionally, this is all about expanding program breadth. So let me give you a bit of a different example. Let's say you have a program that's originally intended to focus on HIV- Let's say you have a program that's originally intended to focus on HIV screening among all visitors to an emergency department regardless of the reported risk behavior. From a functional standpoint of scaling up, you might now want to include hepatitis C testing among those who present to the emergency department. And you might choose to do this because there are estimates that indicate nearly a quarter of HIV-positive people are also hepatitis C-positive. And so this allows for a broader focus by increasing the number or the type of technical areas covered by your existing public health program by now expanding into hepatitis C testing in the emergency room. The next two categories of scaling up are on this slide here. So political is the next category. This is really about addressing national-level barriers for effective program services, so figuring out how we can either advocate for or develop more efficient processes or better policies and guidelines for countries to be able to implement new programs. It often includes standardizing materials to improve not only education but also training. The fourth category of scaling up is what's called organizational. And this is when you're improving either your own or a different organization's ability to continue an initiative both effectively and sustainably over time. So you might want to think about this in terms of how we're diversifying or stabilizing your funding base, thinking about different funding schemes, building your technological or management capacity in order to be able to sustain efforts over time. Now, let's briefly just talk now about strategies for ensuring sustainability. So the effective strategies go beyond the initial funding period, and they can include a variety of things, including how we build both organizational and community capacity, not only in management but also in fundraising and training. You might want to think about sustainability in terms of utilizing simple, user-friendly materials and making tools generalizable, so you don't have to incur a new expense to recreate materials again and again over time. Involving community members in every step of the program is so, so critical as well. And then developing, implementing, and institutionalizing not only cost recovery mechanisms but also quality assurance and self-assessment tools. So people are constantly in a cycle of asking, well, how do we monitor what we're doing? How can we make it better? How can we improve upon our current program to improve quality assurance? You also want to be thinking about how we can build upon existing structures that are in place. So let's say you have a standalone program in a clinic for a particular disease, for example, or some type of disability. Is there a way that you can move that standalone program into a larger setting so it can exist and then share resources with a larger setting? And then you also want to be thinking about program leaders and champions. You don't just want to have one champion for your program. Having more than one champion is ideal, because if you only have one person and that person leaves your organization or leaves the community, that might have an influence on sustainability over time. And then thinking about cross-community learning, learning from mistakes but learning from others is kind of one of the key principles that we always want to be thinking about when we're considering sustainability. So we're at the conclusion of our webinar where I just have the final two quick polls that I'd like to launch for you today, and then I'm happy to answer questions that folks might have as well. So let me launch poll question number nine first. Which of the following defines dissemination? So A, the process of expanding program breadth; B, the targeted distribution of information and intervention materials to a particular audience; C, the process to grow the number of clients reached by a program; or D, the process to increase a program's impact while still maintaining quality? So take a moment to answer this question, please. We'll just take another moment for folks to finish up. Super, everyone did quite well on this. The correct answer is B, again, dissemination is that targeted distribution of both materials and information to a particular public health or clinical practice audience. Terrific. Okay, we've got now our 10th and final question, and it has to do with scaling up. So the question says, which of the following, oh, I lost that question, let me go back to it, my apologies, which of the following is not a category of scaling up? Seems like people struggled a bit with this one, but I wonder if that just has to do with this being the end of the webinar and people's attention and focus kind of waning. So the correct answer is qualitative. The other three are components of scaling up, key categories. So there is not a explicit qualitative piece in scaling up, though you can use qualitative research surely to help you inform your scaling up. It in of itself is not a category of scaling up. I thank you so much for your time and attention today. I hope that I've helped prepare you for your certification examination that you'll be taking soon by reviewing the specific content for your exam related to social behavioral foundations in public health. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks might have, whether it's about part one or about part two of today's talk. So feel free to pose those questions, and I've got some, we've got some time left to be able to answer those if folks do have questions.
Hi, Sarah Mona, we have a question here. Could you address the contribution of low health literacy to health inequities?
So great questions. The question's about addressing low health literacy to health inequities. And so I think that's a very, very important point. So health literacy is, I think, a topic that is getting more and more attention when we think about how people understand health information. So it's not in the classic sense of the word about, you know, literacy when we think about the ability to read and write, but how people understand and process health information and then risk appraisals as well. So remember, health inequities are really those avoidable inequalities in health between groups of people. And you can see how health literacy might play a role because of the avoidable nature of it. Remember, too, that when we say health inequity, we're saying that the health disparity is due to some systematic injustice. And so there could be common systematic injustices that lead to lower health literacy among particular subgroups of our population versus others. I think as public health practitioners, it's our role and our responsibility to work to address health literacy. I think when we're considering, though, different intervention designs, particularly those that work with organizations and communities, engaging our stakeholders, particularly community members and community groups, really helps us to better get a pulse for where those health disparities are related to literacy and ways that we can use that knowledge and be able to address those challenges when we're developing interventions. So not assuming that all folks have the same level of interest in knowing about health, much less knowledge about how to process the vast amount of health information that's out there when they're thinking about behavior change. Are there other questions for me?
Yes, there's, can you please explain the difference between social, community, and societal norms?
Okay, so the difference between social, community, and societal norms. So if we go back to the socio-ecological model, I think that will really help you when we think about where those levels are at. So remember, when you've got this nesting of levels in the socio-ecological model, and typically you see the community level as nested with policy kind of social influences broader than that. So when we talk about community norms, we're typically defining the community as those relationships between people that are, or organizations that are part of the community. In the classic sense of the word "community" is often thought of with a geographic boundary, so neighborhoods, for example. But you've got to remember that communities, especially now in the virtual worlds, when we think about how people organize and group themselves together, that those community norms often don't have a geographically defined boundary. So with community norms, there might be things that are, exist within just that smaller structure. So let me give you an example from perhaps the lesbian, gay, transsexual, bisexual community. So the LGBT community might have a particular norm when it comes to sexual risk behavior, for example, or how they perceive risk of different, different particular behaviors. And that would be something that would be more of a community norm. When we're thinking about a societal norm, that tends to be something that's broader than that. So you want to think about that as something that is kind of a higher level that involves more organizations, more groups, more multiple communities. So we as Americans, for example, might have a more social norm when it comes to, you know, hand-washing techniques, for example, that tends to be broader. So when you're thinking about the socio-ecological model and you're considering determinants as well as intervention strategies, communities tend to be smaller groups nested within larger societal norms. So that's not to say that they might have, the norms might be the same, but the level is a bit different. They could, because as a consequence, the norms might be different across different communities within larger societies. But great question, thank you for posing it. Other questions for folks?
How do we increase HIV testing among population at high risk? What incentives could we use?
That's a great question. So I use it, as you can imagine, I'm an HIV substance abuse researcher, so that's why you see some of those examples in that. I think that, you know, from a behavioral standpoint, a biomedical standpoint, I think there's lots of different options that are out there, which has kind of expanded the HIV prevention toolbox, which is a great, great thing in a sense. One of the nice advantages is HIV testing's really been revolutionized in the last five to 10 years, where we now can do rapid testing that involves oral samples, not just blood draws. So that's a nice way that we can help people increase the knowledge about their HIV status because we can use different biomedical approaches. The other thing that's really changed in the last few years is having home-based testing, where people can actually buy an HIV test and do it in the comfort and privacy of their own home. And so that, I think, has also changed the ability to increase people's knowledge about their status. But then again, there's also policy-level changes. So CDC now recommends, you know, universal screening, that everybody under the age of 13 and 65 should get tested for HIV. Let's not assume that HIV only fits and hits a certain socio-demographic. And so getting everybody to know their status and knowing that AIDS doesn't discriminate, I think, is one way we can think about that. You also might want to consider how you can extrapolate that particular testing to other areas. So whether it's immunizations for influenza or HPV vaccinations, you can think about how we know that there are certain barriers that exist for individuals and communities when it comes to engaging in the health-promoting behaviors that we as a nation prioritize. And we can use those same principles and extrapolate them to other areas when we're thinking about improving uptake of particular interventions that we know have a long-lasting impact on population health. Any other question?
I think that's all the questions that I've seen here.
Terrific. Thank you so much for all of your time and attention today. I wish you the best as you prepare for your CPH exam, and I hope today's webinar was helpful as we kind of walk you through the social behavioral science foundational components. So thank you so much to everyone, and I hope you have a great afternoon and a great weekend.
Thank you, goodbye.